...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, one regard, indivisible through the right to be in justice for all.
Councilor Davis?
Here.
Councilor Wilson, Supervisor Monahan?
Here.
Councilor Brown?
Here.
Councilor Blucer?
Here.
Did you want to talk about the library?
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna go first then?
Sure.
Okay.
Esther McIntyre here for Richards Library. I was just talking to Cynthia who has the calendars in color, the Walter Board. You wanna check them out. One of the things I'd like to share is that we are now doing a meeting time, one or two times a month, for people who are homeschoolers.
Oh, nice.
And if I understand it correctly, you can actually bring your kids there that day and meet up with some other families who homeschool. And they have activities for the kids and then they share ideas or support group, whatever it needs to be.
That's cool.
That's something we're offering now. And also, a couple times a month, there's an opportunity for people to bring in sewing projects. Like if you had something you couldn't exactly figure out how to do. One of the people, one of the trustees, is actually a seamstress. So she has volunteered to help people with any kind of, you know, needs that they might have. And it's just, you know, checking out the calendar and, you know, putting either an email or a call and be able to do that. So we're trying to get some things that people are, you know, maybe in need of, especially in the homeschooling. I think is a really great idea.
Do you still rent out the whole, the room downstairs for people that wanna have?
It is available, yes, for groups, along with, you know, certain stipulations just like they're with me. And on a personal note, I would like to say that I really appreciate, our whole family appreciates, all the kindness and generosity and support that we have gotten for Andy's passing. And he was in the Navy and he went all around the world and he never wanted to live anywhere else but here.
Yes, yeah.
So he got to do it for a while. And we really appreciate it and thank you very much.
On that note, I would like to just say something about the library. I may be interested in renting that room downstairs. I was at a meeting today for two hours on human trafficking.
Mm-hmm.
And I learned a lot that I had no idea. There were over two hundred people there today.
Wow.
Eighty-eight percent of the human trafficking in New York occurs upstate. I had no idea. Seventy-five percent happens with someone they met online. So I'd like to maybe try to schedule something to give parents an idea of what to look for. They gave me a whole bunch of information and contacts and what to look for, but it was a pretty eye-opening event today. So how do I?
Just a caller, an email on the side would be, you know, good set of options.
Just call, register a date and set it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
How big is the room? How many people can it hold?
Hmm, probably, I'm gonna say fifty or sixty.
Oh, okay.
It's about the size of this room.
All right.
Maybe a little smaller than.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess, well, we'll go onto payment of the claims for our first resolution. You ready for the floor?
Yep.
Okay. Doug, a second?
I'll second him.
Doug?
Okay, how you put them here and then you guys descend?
Yes, perfect.
First resolution, payment of claims, Ed and Doug.
Okay.
All right, I got it.
All right. Resolution to approve payment of the claims. The total of abstract one in the general fund for January eighteenth, twenty twenty four is seventeen thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty seven cents. And total of abstract one in the highway fund, January eighteenth, twenty twenty four, is fifty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventeen cents. The total is seventy-two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. For the highway, almost forty thousand of that is just for salt.
With, with salt?
Salt, yeah.
Okay. Um, just, I made note of the fact that our highway budget, we've exceeded both the adopted and the modified budget. And just so the public knows, what was basically the underlying reason why we exceeded the budget this year for highway?
For, um, well, we got a whole budget thing to do. Do you wanna wait for that or do you want me?
Sure, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Um, one of the big things is salt was ordered in the beginning of last year. Normally he orders it and then this one, you know, he's starting a year, so. But you're talking about just twenty twenty threes?
Yeah, just looking at the, the detail of expenditures and so it shows that the unencumbered balance, we've exceeded the budget by seventy-two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and twenty seven cents.
And what proof, what proof is that on?
I'm not looking at the code, I'm looking at total expenditures.
Oh, the total?
Yeah.
Oh, you're looking at everything?
Yeah.
Okay, well, like about a hundred and fiftieth thousand of that is the chips that he went over. We only moved ninety from fund balance, so that leaves like sixty thousand?
I, I guess what I'm asking is what did we spend it on that caused us to go over?
Oh, in what categories?
Yeah, just, I, I haven't gone through all the details of it.
No, but we will, we'll be doing that.
I guess what projects or things did we, just, just so the public knows.
That's fine.
When somebody looks at this, they see that we've exceeded it, so they understand why.
Oh, we'll go code by code.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna go code by code.
Yep.
Okay. So then we need to go on payment of the claims. Is there any other discussion on this, anyone? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'm gonna close, I'll leave it there. Um, okay, then the next item I had was old business. There were some things I wanted to look up from, from the last meeting. First one was the date of the fund balance policy was January twenty fourth. So I'm gonna be right there. So I'm gonna change that date at the bottom of our adopted by section. And I did wanna make a change to the, uh, approved schedule of appointments and rates of pay, the people that are paid salary. I did wanna add the secretary to that for the year. And I looked back and saw that the prior secretary was always salary in the last, you know, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So this year, secretary now went over by twenty-seven hours in her time at working here. And I just think if we make, we should make her salary like the other one was. And that way, if she needed to work more, it wouldn't be going over the budget. So is there any discussion on that? I mean, the three of you were there then, so you all know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you made her aware of the one prior?
Have you made her aware of this, that you're planning to do this? Because that's money out of her pocket.
She's okay with it. I did talk to her about it because, you know, in the past I kept saying, you got, you gotta average thirty-two a week, you can't go over that. And then when I was looking at the negatives, she's a little bit in the negative, and I said, how could that be, you know? So she went twenty-seven and a half hours over. So I just thought, well, she's okay with it, she doesn't mind. And then she can work more and she does wanna work more hours and doesn't really care about the pay. So are you in favor of me adding that onto this line?
So would be salary for how many hours a week?
It'd be still thirty-two.
Okay.
But if she went over.
Yeah.
It would be a set fee every week, it wouldn't change.
So she, she's currently getting health insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, because she meets the threshold of thirty-two?
Right.
Okay.
But she's hourly now, so we would just be taking whatever balance is left and dividing it by the number of weeks that are left and that's what she went.
So is this a motion or a resolution or?
Um, I guess it's amending, it's amending the Resolution eleven from last week.
Yep. Well, the, the resolution only lists her salary. If we're changing her from hourly to salary, that probably needs to be a separate resolution.
Aren't all these, aren't all these people's salary that are on here?
Yes.
Isn't that what this means or no?
Right. But I think you're actually modifying her terms of employment, which, that's just listing whose salary and what their, what their salary is.
Oh, currently.
It's not actually modifying. I mean, if we're doing this, I mean, we can just do a separate motion.
Yeah, all right.
It's a motion to make her salary instead of hourly. As simple as that, is that all we need to say?
Yes.
Okay, so make se- secretary's salary is the?
Cause that makes everyone here a salary, you know, tax collector, sesser, sesser clerk, town clerk, judge, they're all salaries.
So I'll make a motion that we, well, you haven't actually made a motion to do that yet.
No, no, I haven't.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we modify the terms of employment of the confidential secretary to the supervisor to change from an hourly pay rate to a salary pay rate at the rate of how many, what's the salary?
Um, I'm not sure, I don't have the budget with me, but I'm pretty sure.
Should be.
I guess the rate here, so you're gonna modify.
I think it's thirty thousand seven eighty-four. That's the old one you, you, oh no, we're right down here.
It's twenty-nine thousand two seven eight.
No, you're looking at December.
Plus three and a half percent? That, that's the modified budget.
No, but that's December's budget. That's twenty twenty-three's budget you're looking at.
Oh, right, we got it, twenty-nine.
I think it's thirty thousand seven eighty-four because that would be eighteen fifty-four.
So we'll modify it to a salary of, say that again, thirty?
I think it's thirty thousand seven eighty-four, that kinda.
Thirty thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Well, you could say twenty twenty-four budget amount.
Fair enough. To the, to the twenty twenty-four budget amount, we're gonna do it.
Okay, now, wait a minute. We're gonna modify the employment of the secretary from hourly to salary to a, to a salary of?
To the, to the twenty twenty-four budgeted amount instead of putting the dot numbers.
To a salary of, oh, okay, of the twenty, twenty-four budgeted amount.
For thirty-two hours per week.
Thirty-two hours per week.
That make sense?
It is.
Well, she might work more than that, but yeah.
But that's what the salary is.
Yeah, that's, that's what it means.
That, that's the minimum she needs to work more salary.
Okay, that's perfect, yeah.
Okay. So that's, that, I made the motion, somebody needs to second.
Second.
Okay, so you made the motion.
Deb, Ed seconded you.
Ed, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay.
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 All in favor then, say aye.
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 Okay, so we passed that. So now, last week we passed that, so now you want our resolution to modify that to include her on that list?
Do we need to?
No.
I don't think we need to, we don't.
We don't need to. I mean, that took care of it.
Next year I'll put it in that way and then it'll be good. Cause at that current point, uh, we did this, it was, it's better to put the way you do it.
Okay.
All right, and then the other thing.
Now you can blame me when you tell her.
She's okay with it, she doesn't care. Um, the next thing I did, I looked up was the comment about the painter. I wanted to check on that. So it does say, oh, purchase is greater than two thousand but less than twenty thousand requires written quotes from three vendors. When I went back and looked at our meeting packet from back then, and before this resolution here, I did ask for everybody to try to get quotes. And I think you came back and said you couldn't get anybody, right? Didn't they say they were too busy then? And I had made some phone calls and I don't know.
I did.
You did too?
Yeah.
Okay, so then number nine says, a good faith effort shall be made to obtain the required number of proposals or quotes. If the purchaser is unable to obtain the required number of proposals or quotes, this attempt shall be documented. In no event shall the inability to obtain the proposals or quotes prevent the procurement. And that's what our resolution from back then says. It says, whereas a good faith effort has been made to obtain three written quotes for the project, whereas one written proposal has been submitted by the painter who just completed power washing and staining the bandstand and painting the pavilion, be it resolved, and then we accepted the, the proposal and authorized the hiring account. So we followed the procurement policy and that's my view.
I, I think to be fair, if we had time, we should have advertised for quotes. But I think what happened was Deb found out this contractor was available and it's not easy to get contractors on short notice.
No.
And it's, it's been something that's been on our list to do for a long time and a lot of people complained about it. I think we took the opportunity, I think in the future.
Yeah, we should.
What Brian's suggesting is that we should have advertised.
They're just.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but we should have advertised.
I could speak up a little bit about that. I've been in construction for forty years. I mean, all you gotta do is look up painting contractors in the book and you call three of them. If they're not available, you still have paperwork that says you called them and they weren't available. I believe you hired this painter and somebody knew the paint because he was available to do it. He, I don't, I don't know what good faith eff- effort is. Uh, Gore Electric, did you, you had three bids for the electrical in here? You spent over like eight thousand dollars? You had no electric, did that, was that put out the bid?
No, because it was through National Ridge Grant. So he goes through Hill Electric and then he go through one of their vendors. So we didn't, we didn't.
Hill Electric's got thirty vendors and subcontractors. I'm not getting off base, but you just passed the policy last week that you were gonna uphold whatever ten twenty-three A is that says you need to get three bids for any work that's being done in the town of Thurman. You bought it, picked up for forty-three thousand dollars. There weren't any bids for that.
How come? Wouldn't Hill Electric should have given me a list then of vendors that they use instead of suggesting, you know, that I would use more?
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't know that, that.
Well, there's twenty electrical contractors in the telephone book. I mean, I only, same with, I don't know what kind of emergency the highway furnace was, but I put in a furnace in my house and within three days I had four bids. And it went from sixty-five hundred dollars for the same furnace I put it in, the guy I contracted would put it in for thirty-five hundred, which was adoring, they peeing out. So you passed the policy last week that you were gonna uphold the three bid for the, it was town policy. And from what I see, we're not getting three bids anywhere, so why even put it on policy in the organizational?
Well, the more, the highway garage, the carbon monoxide detector was going off and there was a huge hole in the firebox. They had no heat and the diesel trucks have to be kept warm.
Yeah.
And G A Bove is the person who does our furnace here. We have a contract and.
No, you, you used to deal with ManCare Energy.
But they didn't, they didn't, um, they didn't get the bid though from the county. So we can't use them for our fuel. So we had to switch to G A Bove. And when they came to do the furnace here, they had me sign the contract then.
Yeah, you're gonna tap you.
Yeah.
But still, that doesn't go out the bid? Not an emergency like that.
Well, we wouldn't have to do it then.
I think we can make a fair case that the furnace was a, was an emergency. It's something that had to be done right away. I think your criticism's fair enough on the other things that we should be more careful in the future and we should give them.
You just passed, last week you passed the same thing and followed it. I just, if you didn't follow in twenty twenty-three, why even put it in the, in the, in the meeting packet last week? There's no reason to follow it if you haven't followed it this year. Last year.
Well, we have, we do have exceptions to sometimes to having to do that. And one of them was we couldn't get a painter. I did call painters and so did he. And they didn't wanna get a quote, they're busy. They're all, they were scheduled far against of that. And I didn't wanna wait to paint the building. It's been over forty years. So I don't know, but. And then my last thing was about the Friday day off. I asked Alex about that and I'm not trying to bring that back up. You guys, you know, you don't even wanna vote for it. But I did wanna let you know that he responded to me and said that I was correct. The town can authorize additional days off with pay, as was communicated to the caller. So he did say that he spoke with you.
Yep.
And he said if we wanna add any additional holidays and the town approves those days off, there'll be no dispute from the union and we would just need to add it to the contract. So we'll be up for negotiations in June. So we'll see what we wanna do then, maybe substitute it for one or do something, I don't know. But I just wanted you to know that we can add more things to them, we just can't take.
Well, what, what union representative wouldn't let you add a holiday? It's his employees.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's you that had an holidays. The state doesn't get that day off, the county doesn't get that day off. And there's no municipality in Warren County that gets that day off. But for some reason you think we need to get it. Your employees need to get it up.
Well, I do think so. I think I watch how they work and they work on Christmas Day and they're, they work twenty hours and.
They get thirty-five days off, they get three holidays in November already, and you're giving them a fourth one?
Well, I just think, I know where I am right now.
You're probably asked for Blue Friday too.
Yeah.
You don't know?
I don't know, I just.
You guys can, you guys can one take the whole week off and pay.
I have to stay, I have to stay out, which I do. But, you know, that's up to them, that's.
Well, it took any.
They control what they bring to the contract.
It's been voted though.
That's not up to them.
I'm just saying, we could add things if we wanted to. And we, we could substitute.
You're the guys that are bringing it to the, to the union contract.
What?
He, Ed and Charlie gotta stay out because they're union.
I do, I know.
I know. But the rest of, the rest of the board and the town and the supervisor are bringing it to a union contract that says, we can give our employees many days off as we want at that very expense.
Well, they can also take the day off with a vacation day, but that they would have in charge of their own vacation time, which is what the state and.
Yes, everybody else, if you, you want the day off, you take the day off. Anyone with over five years to fifteen or twenty years, then the highway department gets, I believe, between thirty-five and forty days off now.
Yeah.
Holidays, vacation, sick days, I believe. Anyone with twenty, fifteen to twenty years gets forty days off. That's a lot of days.
I don't know, I don't think that there are, but they will if they stay longer than that, yeah. Okay, so my first resolution is the home rule request that was brought over to me by John Alcander from Senator Steck's office. I emailed it to you. Um, this, this is a resolution based on a resolution that we passed back in, I don't think it was May, yeah, back in May. So we've already seen this and discussed it and voted yes. And it was sent back to them. And now it's finally reaching these, as an assembly bill and a senate bill. So what they're asking of us is that we do a resolution to amend, to allow them to amend real property tax law and the real property law regarding condominiums. Now, we don't have any condominiums here, but you never know about the future. And what they're trying to do, from what I got out of my phone call with them, was condominiums are taxed as one whole unit right now.
Yeah.
And they wanna be able to tax them as the individually homes that they are. So all he needs me to do is for me and Cynthia to sign and certify eight copies of this and send it back to them in support of this bill. Is there any questions about it? I do have more literature here on it if you're curious about it. I printed out the bill. Anyone wanna see it? Okay.
I'll drive it.
Okay, did you need it?
No, I'm, I'm.
It's your final bid.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just need this resolution brought to the floor then.
Okay.
Ed? Okay. And a second?
I'll second it.
Randy? It's a resolution to support legislation that grants the town of Thurman the ability to change by local law how the value of condominiums are assessed. Whereas the town of Thurman passed a resolution in May twenty twenty-three requesting that Governor Hochul support legislation that will allow towns the option to assess all newly constructed condominiums in a manner that reflects the most current market value. And whereas copies of this resolution were forwarded to Governor Hochul, Senator Steck, Assemblywoman Carrie Werner, and Assemblyman Simpson, and has now become Senate Bill S seven six nine six and Assembly Bill A eight one eight three, be it resolved, the town board of the town of Thurman supports this legislation. Eight copies of the home rule request and eight certified copies of this resolution, including the results of a roll call, will be forwarded to Senator Steck's office located at Five Orange Street, Glens Falls, New York, one two eight zero one. Okay? Any other discussion? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 And Charlie is absent. Okay, the next thing we have is a request for occupancy tax for the Maple Days. Um, does anyone remember bringing that resolution to the floor?
I will.
Doug, okay. And a second?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm.
Go ahead, okay. Um, attached to this is her request. And it says, whereas the Maple Days event has been a major event for the town of Thurman in the past that brings thousands of tours to the town and has been a continuing success. And whereas this year, there will be approximately ten farms in Thurman where visitors will experience maple-related demonstrations, wagon rides, tours, product sampling and shopping, as well as a maple craft show at the Thurman Town Hall. Be it resolved, the town board will grant occupancy tax funding in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to help cover the expense of this event. So is there any, any discussion on this? I mean, it's just a little more than they had last year.
I'm abstaining from discussing and voting on it.
I know, you have to.
Wait, what, what were you?
I'm abstaining from discussion and voting on this.
Okay, Ed, so any discussion?
No.
What's the difference between the TSA and TCA?
No difference, they're the same.
They're all the same.
Yeah.
Cause the top of the page says it's for TCA and her writing says TSA.
Yeah, they're, she put it to me.
I can answer that question. I, I mean, I don't wanna get involved in a discussion about the occupancy tax, but I can answer that. Originally, it was incorporated as a nonprofit, the Thurman Station Association, because of the railroad was coming to town. Over time, that's been less of a factor. And now we've morphed it into a community association to do things beyond just the railroad and also not just these events that you're very well aware of, but other community activities and things as well. So the, it's morphed into the Thurman Community Association. In fact, there's paperwork been filed with the state to officially either change the name or have it as a DBA, Doing Business As. I can't remember which one, but, yeah.
Can you tell me what a hand-gating service is? Definition?
In, I don't know of a legal definition of it, but it's basically anything that people do to promote or help with the event that doesn't actually, it's not work for their particular farm. It's things that they do for the, the greater good of the event.
Without pay, without.
Without pay, yeah. I, for example, we build and put up over a hundred signs around town. So all that time, they value it at fifteen dollars an hour for the, the time doing all that. And every farm does something and the people in the organization all do things, whether it's writing up advertisements or whatever, things like that.
They're asking for three thousand dollars in hand-gating service?
No, they're stating that they're going to.
That's what.
Provide.
Yeah, provide, okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stick with it. Okay, thanks.
So they're volunteering. So their volunteer hours are at minimum wage and then the supplies and samples, like it could be they're gonna contribute the wood or the paint or, you know, things like that, items.
Now, I need to know, I couldn't hear what you guys said. Doug, did you make the motion on this?
Yeah.
Doug made the motion, Ed seconded it.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to be sure.
And they're gonna have their craft fair here again, so. And we do, we have eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars in op tax to allocate. So, I think fifteen thousand is too big a job, I mean, last year it was twelve-nine.
And, and some of that money gets returned if it's on schedule.
Right, some of the money is, I did just get returned.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. Well, whatever they use, they have to submit receipts and a, and a final report and stuff like that. Um, okay, so, okay.
No, I'm good.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And next we have two more occupancy requests, um, the one's not listed on the agenda because I just received it by email today. And it is in your packet, Doug. So the first one is a resolution to award Thurman Connection Snowmobile Club three thousand dollars occupancy tax for the Blizzard Blast event. It's gonna be held on March ninth at Thousand Acres Ranch. And then they're requesting help, well, I should have put it to the floor first, so does anyone want to do this?
I will.
Doug, okay. And a second? Ed, okay.
Doug in there?
Yeah, I, I got it then.
Yeah.
Whereas the Thurman Snowmobile Club is holding an event at Thousand Acres Ranch on March ninth, twenty twenty-four, and requests occupancy tax to help with advertising, entertainment and food. And whereas this event will become an annual event drawing visitors to the area, be it resolved, the town board will grant occupancy tax funding in the amount of three thousand dollars to encourage tourism and help cover the expense of this event. So, there is a letter here regarding, regarding the event. And maybe you'd like to speak to the event, I don't know.
I, I mean, I know Sue had sent me over the, the.
The information.
All the information that I reviewed yesterday and just made a couple clerical errors, but, uh, yeah, I mean.
This is the second one, right?
This would be the second one.
Yeah.
And we really, because last year was such a wide success that we really feel that this year is even a little bit better and will attract more people, so.
See, they don't charge, no fee anymore or rent, they use stuff.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
To attend it is free?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's good.
So it's open to people besides people in the club?
Oh, it's open to the general public, anybody that wants to come, it's more than welcome.
Anybody. Okay.
Yeah, there's no fee, I mean, it's just.
It's just a fun event to bring people out and.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay, is there any other further discussion that you need on this?
I'm, I'm, once again, I'm, I'm gonna abstain from discussing it because I'm a member of an organization that also gets occupancy tax. We can be viewed as in competition, but also, I just wanna make clear that this application mentions my farm specifically. I was unaware that that was gonna be the case, so I, I'm abstaining from.
Oh, meaning that they snowmobile down by your place?
Yeah, it, it implies that my business gets some benefit from this, which I didn't know this was gonna be in here. So I just, to be fair, I'm, I'm abstaining from.
Yeah, that's just a layer, I mean, cause we live on a snowmobile.
Well, it's in the application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think that the fact that, I, I believe it's the same weekend, right, that the Maple Fest?
Uh.
March ninth, yeah.
March ninth is the first day of the Maple weekend.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think Sue indicated, you know, like, the fact that there's gonna be a lot more people in the area going to the Maple Fest.
Mm-hmm.
That'll bring more people to our Blizzard Blast. And that's why we're, we're sort of counting on, you know, a, a larger participation.
I have a question for you. It's known, they're gonna put signs out to towns so the people that are here for Maple Fest know that your, your party's going on?
No, but we're gonna advertise, I don't know, I mean.
Well, I must know.
When you get twelve hundred people a day coming in the town that, that they're not looking at your, where you're advertising, if you had some type of flag out like Thurman Maple Days, they'd know that you were having a Blizzard Blast at Thousand Acres.
Put in the Maple Days thing that thirty, Snowmobile Club party group that same day?
I mean, can we do that? I mean.
Do what?
With the advertising of Maple Days somehow, you know, advertise that we are having our, you know, Blizzard Blast that same.
It's only one day at a Maple Days.
Yeah, it's only one day.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't personally do the advertising. My only concern, and you'd have to talk to the people that do it, is now you have to have a different advertisement for each day. It, it, so it adds more to the advertisement, then you have to take it out for the last five days of Maple Days. It, it would complicate their efforts, but you can certainly speak to either Robin Mailer or Perky Granger, cause they coordinate that.
Okay.
That would be the only concern I, I would have.
They could put it on your site too.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah.
Because it does list, you know, she's gonna put on Facebook and club website.
Right. We, we are gonna advertise it.
Posters and radio.
Yes.
So, that's what it's at, yeah. Okay, well, well, so, ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor to award three thousand dollars occupancy tax to the Thurman Snowmobile Club, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, now we have another application from the Thurman Snowmobile Club, um, for nine thousand dollars. And this is to maintain the trails by equipment.
Another one for the Snowmobile Club?
Yeah, this one's for trail maintenance. I didn't have the actual resolution page.
Yeah.
Is that hard to run or a little bit more?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Was my date right?
Yeah, there is in the second.
It's not in here?
And.
No, I did do one, but I just thought it was. Hmm. No, I just think it's, I don't know. I did just get it today, maybe I didn't type it up. I thought I did, Doug, do you wanna give me a minute? I'll go upstairs and see. Thank you. Maybe you shouldn't sit in front of everyone. You look at your.
Yeah, well, I, I'm cold all the time anyway.
That should be.
Yeah, you too, right, Ed? Yeah, we're all freezing all the time.
Yeah. Okay. The nine thousand that they're requesting is for trail maintenance, equipment purchasing, and goes on to talk about how they connected the two trails. So now riders can get into the town of Thurman, Stony Creek, and recently the new trail in Orangeburg goes up to Hickory Hill and South Warren to Thurman Connection Trails. I don't know much about the snowmobile trails, I've never been on them, so I'm not sure about what areas they're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
But that's what she liked, this nine thousand for equipment maintenance, trail maintenance, bridge repairs, and, um, I guess somewhere where they cover, where they put the groomer, is that what she's referring to here? It's a addition to our groomer barn that will be used to cover drags when not in use anywhere.
Addition, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What is it?
Well, we already have a, you know, groomer barn, but they wanna extend it so we can get all the, you know, groomers and everything inside, like, and have you sit outside all, you know, the rest of the year.
Fit it inside. Okay. That's, yeah, that's what she says at the bottom, to, um, building an addition to our groomer barn for storage of equipment. Second page is not really filled out, it just looks like it's gonna be used to make purchases and maintain equipment and work on the trails. So does anyone wanna bring this one to the floor?
Doug.
Doug, okay. And Ed, your second?
Yeah.
Okay. So, whereas the Thurman Snowmobile Club is requesting funds to maintain the snowmobile trails that will connect Thurman to other towns and bring in tours to our local businesses and rental properties. And whereas the ability to do bridge repair, trail maintenance and equipment maintenance, be it resolved, the town board will grant occupancy tax funding in the amount of nine thousand dollars to encourage tourism and help cover the expenses. So. Is there discussion on this? Do you have any thoughts on, on the amount or did you want?
Nope.
No? Okay.
As far as building trails, again, nine thousand dollars gonna go very far?
Doesn't go far.
Nope.
No.
Not even a dent.
Yeah.
There, there's a lot of maintenance, especially this year with water and.
Mm-hmm, damage, that's what she spoke about, the damage, yeah.
A lot of water, yeah.
Covert replacement she talked about, yeah. And we do have quite a bit of occupancy tax, we have eighty thousand nine hundred and forty dollars left. And when I look at what we've used in the past, last year we used thirty-two thousand five hundred. So, um, we were fortunate enough to get fifty thousand this year for occupancy tax. They gave an extra twenty thousand now because they raised so much money. So, it isn't a financial hardship, it's not gonna hurt anybody else if we do this.
No.
Do you have any thoughts on it?
I'm abstaining from discussing, yeah.
Oh, you're abstaining, okay.
I believe you oughta do it.
Hmm?
I said I believe you oughta do it.
You believe I oughta do it?
You got short-term rentals all over in this town, but somebody pulls two sleds into town with Thurman, he's got houses to stay in, they're using trails that he's putting all of his time and effort into. It's a plus-plus for everyone in this town.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay with that, I think it's a, it's a good idea. And do they ride on the railroad tracks too? I saw, um.
Right now, we only have, you know, we go from Thousand Acres up to the four eighteen bridge.
Okay, yeah.
From what I understand, you know, like, we do wanna extend it and go back up to North Creek where we used to.
Mm-hmm.
That's a nice ride, I think.
It's just, you know, there's a lot of bridges and it takes a lot of manpower and money to, cause we have to cover those bridges to ride the snowmobiles over.
Oh.
And then we, in the, before they train and start up again, we gotta tear it, they have, it's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
So they go.
I think there's nine bridges from Thurman Station to North Creek.
Do it.
Yeah, and they all have to be covered.
A lot of time and material and. You get, you gotta put it out when you take it off.
I mean, this year our biggest effort was getting the trail to connect with, you know, South and North Warren. You know, hopefully, maybe next year we can concentrate on the railroad tracks, but.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll take a look. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next thing.
First thing, okay.
Uh, who introduced it and stuff?
Doug gave it to me.
Doug gave it to me.
I seconded it.
Okay.
And actually, just recently, I've been, you know, on Facebook, they've, we've actually been, you know, highlighting different B and Bs that are in Thurman that are right on the trail.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that will help, I think, you know, bring more business into the town for, for those B and Bs.
Now, how do you want me to handle, um, the payment of this? Can I do one check for the total? Do you need two different checks or they, they go to all one fund?
I think, I think it all goes to one fund, I mean.
And is the bank account called Thurman Connection Snowmobile Club? Or should I check with her before I write it down?
Maybe you better check with Sue.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be the Thurman Connection. Yeah, we're checking with her.
Yeah, yeah, check with Sue.
Can you get from Thousand Acres to Orangeburg downtown North Creek?
So, what we can, so, the new trail, cross Forty Tinkerman.
Nobody knows.
And then go up over Hickory to Aldenadie.
It was.
And then from there, we hook in with South and, South Warren. And a couple of years ago, North Warren connected to South Warren with a trail that goes right by McDonald's in Orangeburg and goes up the mountain. So, you, you can literally ride from Chester Town now to our Thurman Connection Trails.
From Chester Town, yeah?
Yeah.
Wow.
So you could get from Thousand Acres to Scrum Lake by going down the power lines up nine?
Yeah.
That's a deal.
Oh, I just found a little copy.
How do you do?
Yeah, okay, so next, the next thing we have to do are the budget adjustments. Now, financial reports that you have in your packet are for the end of December. Have a good night.
Good night.
Ancestr.
Yeah. And they um, it's not the final, because I haven't closed out the year yet. So these budget adjustments are as of the day of December thirty first that I have on this list. So. If you turn. If you turn to the very first revenue page, which is, they don't remember the sequence really by now, I don't know. Page six would be your sixth page. That shows the revenues for the year for the general fund. And our budget was seven hundred and twelve thousand six thirty eight. We earned nine hundred and nineteen thousand, so we're two hundred and six thousand, higher than we thought with our budget. So then if you flip to the expenditures page, which is landscape. What I did here is I just start to go down down the list and see wherever there's a negative, how I can make that a positive. I cannot close out the year unless there are no negatives. It has to be no negatives to, for Williamson law to close it out. So. They. They go in order, but um if one's an increase and the other one's a decrease, it's down in the bottom part of this column here of your budget adjustment page. And then at the top will be if I increased the revenue and increased the expense that we needed money in. So for instance, the first one, the justice court clerk had a negative of two hundred and thirty six thirteen. So in order to satisfy that, I'm decreasing the justice's equipment, and that will bring that to zero. And if you want, I'll just go through them one by one so that I can explain like what what happened and.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, the next negative is the supervisor's secretary, eight hundred and eighty three dollars and twenty five cents, which is due to about twenty seven and a half hours over or thirty two hours a week. So then, if you look for her, she's right here, the eight hundred and eighty three, I'm going to increase the interest that we earned to balance that out to zero. So we're recognizing more revenue. When it comes to the interest. The budget was six thousand six forty, that's including with modifying it as we went, but we earned twenty one thousand three oh two. So there's actually fourteen thousand in interest, and I can increase that revenue code and eliminate some of these expenditures. So that's what I did with that one. And the next one is tax collection contractual. And she's up here on the top, increasing the interest for the two hundred and twenty dollars and eliminating that negative. And what happened there was sometime during the, almost the end of the year, we did a budget adjustment for one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars, because I thought she was done for the year and that that money was available to use, but then she went on um like a convention that she attended, and she had mileage and meals, and and that brought her into this negative.
Okay.
Okay, so then the next negative is animal control, personal services there. And that's on the first page at the top. And what happened there, there were two checks from last year that were unclear, he never cashed them. So I discussed that with him, what did he want me to do about it? He couldn't find them, so I had to void them and reissue them. When I reissued them, even though the actual money was still in the bank account, it hit the codes. So that's what that is. And I also increased the interest earned to make it a negative, but actually the money was still in the bank, cause he never cashed them. Um, let's see, the next one we have is. Six nine eight nine point four, that is our occupancy tax. Our budget was thirty thousand, we gave the extra money using the remain, using part of that balance that we had from the prior year. So that's why you'll see it on this list as using fund balance, cause it's actually using money that we, like part of that eighty thousand that we have. The next one is the youth programs, that whole um youth section is in the negative, because we have not received our reimbursement, but we're waiting on over six thousand dollars in reimbursement for that, all those negatives. And tomorrow morning at nine, I have an appointment at the county to discuss the check for this. I submitted it in October, but I haven't gotten the money out. So they'll be dealt with with the reimbursement. The historian contractual is in the negative, nine dollars and sixty one cents. Go take that from the interest earned as well. And that's, her that went a little bit over. Um, the community garden is in the negative, one thousand six seventy one. That, we did receive that soil and water grant money, it is part of the revenues on that revenue page, it came in in December. But I have to adjust the budget, there was a zero budget for the revenue and for the garden expenses, so I'm just gonna increase the budget for both those items, and then they'll wash out to be a zero. The next one is refuse and garbage personnel services. That one went over, and so did the um second position there went over a little bit. And also the contractual went over a little bit. Um, so I have that down here, let's see.
How did we not budget enough hours for the guys for that one?
Well, for some days where the employee took time off, someone from the highway filled in, and that was paid at overtime hours. Some hours were additional for meeting the company that picks up the tubicard containers.
Tires.
Tires, yeah, meeting the guy for the tires, you're gonna see that one, it's pretty hard too.
I would like to add, though, we did save a lot of money. I haven't known that at Hunkin'. I'll be adding the county take a month off a thousand, it's one that did.
I I'm not disputing the amount that we spent, I'm just wondering why we didn't budget enough for it.
I just want people to know.
Because it was kind of shortened, it was sort of like a minimum. I I should've put more in, and I did for the next year, put more in.
Do they charge by the tire?
What?
Do they charge by the tire?
Yes.
Are you ready?
Oh, yeah.
Very expensive at the county, I think it was what, seventeen dollars for one tire.
Seventeen dollars a tire, yeah.
That's a regular car truck, small truck tire.
What, did the new people charge us?
I think two fifty, okay.
Well, what, it was down, we got it down to two fifty.
Two fifty a tire, and we spent four thousand.
Yeah, that's part of the savings.
Yeah.
Four thousand dollars, oh, we spent four thousand dollars.
We had a huge cubi, it's a whole year's worth of tires.
No, the contractual was only seven ninety sixty.
Yeah.
The four thousand was for personnel.
No, the contractual's three thousand three thirteen.
What?
At the bottom there.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was looking at the one at the top, refuse and garb, oh, that's P S two, that's personnel also. I'm sorry, I'm not saying.
What happened with the tires, though, was we had the tires picked up in January of last year, and then, and that was a lot of money too. And then this year, all the tires were picked up in December. So we actually got twice in one year hit for picking up an entire container of tires. But actually, with the savings from this person, actually, I think Charlie found them in the newspaper, right? Well, we saved over fifteen thousand this year and over fourteen thousand last year, just in tires.
That's just truck, car tires, that's not counting, we did clean all the candy and tires up too.
Oh, yeah, up the hill.
What's nice about it, he takes them rimming off. We don't have to separate them and deal with it, it's a very good deal. Your, say this thousand dollars?
What was the last retired again, two dollars and fifty cents?
This past one was two fifty.
And that was tires from December to, or January or December?
For the whole year, that's a year's worth of tires. Yeah. We have on the invoice the total amount of tires, cause that's how he charges, they actually count.
I seen the bill for it on the abstract, it's four thousand dollars.
We're gonna count them, counting them, we don't, we don't.
Yeah. That's just, that's one year, yeah.
I got it.
We take a take, we take in a lot of tires, do we charge to take in tires too? What do we charge for that? Per tire?
Oh, I'd have to look at my list, that's.
I think it's maybe five dollars, I don't know.
Five dollars, something like that. A lot of times, I don't, I don't wanna say they're not true, I gotta look at the paper.
But they get seventeen, yeah, right. Well, that's why, that's over there. Um, the next one is workers' comp. And that's seven, oh wait, no, the next one was social security, that's just a little bit over, because the wages were a little bit more. Um, two forty four seventy six. I don't seem to see that one on my list.
Nope, I don't see it.
Needs to be, though.
We can add it.
Yeah, no, that two forty four seventy six needs to be on my list, and I'll take that one interest earned. Okay. And the workers' comp was the years that we had to pay for the fire department from the contract that wasn't satisfied before. We do, our contract says we pay that our workers' comp. Um, and then hospital and medical insurance. That's not, that's, it's a thousand ninety four, and that's going to come from sales tax, I'm gonna increase the sales tax for that. And that, there is, the the problem that went over is because January's bill's paid in December on this month. And there's also the money that the employees pay, which wouldn't get calculated till January, that would be applied against that, it comes to about four hundred and or six hundred dollars, so. And that's it for general fund. And then highway, same format, has a new page, um.
Do we have one?
Yeah.
Highway?
Yeah. Highways at the bottom, they don't have a lot, because they don't have a lot of codes, they only have five.
Oh, okay, I, I, I just didn't see it, it's under the full, the occupancy.
Yeah. Below the A, below the general fund.
Okay, yeah, got it.
So. They don't have a lot of negatives, but the ones, some of them, like that would be, like chips, five one one two point two, that's chips. I'm increasing the chips revenue for that. If you look at the revenue over here on the very first page of it, chips rev, uh, budget was two hundred and fifty thousand, we earned four hundred and ninety four, so we have a surplus of two hundred and forty four thousand four sixty two. So I'm using that to offset that negative. And then machinery contractual, that's in the negative, sixteen thousand seventy two dollars. And I'm going to take from uh general repairs, there had thirteen thousand left up there. You know, taking it from point one, I'm taking it from the salaries, because their salaries were under twenty nine thousand. That's where I used that sixteen from. And I also used ten thousand over for the snow removal contractual, purchasing all that salt, we're ten thousand over on that. And, let's see. The health insurance was, the regular health insurance was a negative four thousand fifty six dollars, but the retirees was under, so I took the retiree surplus and used that against the negative four thousand fifty six, and the other thousand I took from the disability, because that wasn't paid until, that was paid early in the year, so we didn't have it at the end of the year, so we had a dozen left there. And that solves all the negatives we have at the current moment. And if you want to, uh, let's see.
What's the social security code that we're gonna?
Social security code?
Yeah.
Nine oh three oh point eight.
A nine oh three.
Zero point eight.
A nine oh three point eight. All right, is that all of them?
That's all right.
Okay, so I'll introduce the motion, including the adjustment for social security code A nine oh three point eight, taken from interest earned, uh, code A two four zero one, in the amount of, what was it?
Two forty four and seventy six cents.
Two forty four and seventy, seventy six cents?
Okay, so Brandy's introducing that.
I'll second.
Ed seconded it. Okay. So any other discussion on that?
That was, yeah, I asked a question about, in December, you transferred forty three thousand dollars from the equipment capital outlay. I asked Pat what we bought with it, and he said it was used for repairs, is that correct?
Hmm, I don't think that's what he, I don't think that's right. I think there was money in one code that was spent in another, and I moved, moved it from one to the other. What code was it moved out of, do you know?
It wa- it was in equipment capital outlay. It was on December's meeting packet, it was forty three dol- forty three thousand.
Capital outlay. It's chips, oh, do you mean five one three oh point two?
Yeah, five one fifty one thirty.
Fifty one thirty point two?
Dash two. You moved it from equipment capital outlay, did you go to machinery contractual, machinery repair?
I think that had to do with the purchase of a truck and what code it was um paid out of.
Yeah, that's the code that the truck was paid out.
Yeah, because the one.
That was, you had fifty thousand dollars in the budget, and you moved this forty three thousand into that account.
To cover the cost of a, of a truck or a loader, one of them vehicles. Forty three thousand sounds like the loader payment.
No, that forty seven was loader, forty three was truck, forty two nine, or forty two and change.
Forty two, is that what?
For the truck.
Okay.
The loader was forty seven thousand. So you had, you had roughly seven thousand dollars left in the budget, cause you had fifty thousand in it.
I can run it, do you want me to go run it and I can show you?
I asked Pat what we bought, and he said it went into machinery repair, I'm thinking, that's not machinery repair, that's equipment.
No, it's not. No, it had to do with the truck payments, it had to do with equipment, that's what that had to do with. I think it got paid out of one code, but the money was in another code, and I moved it. But I, I'll come run that for you, that's no big deal, take me a second. If you want, I could do it after the meeting, if you want.
Right, I, I would like to copy that packet that you guys are looking at, budget adjustments.
Oh, sure. Yeah, you can have that. Do you have, you have this part, right?
Yeah, but you guys are reading off of something I can't see for budget adjustments.
Oh, you need the financials, you need this?
Well, I would think that would come with packet myself.
Yeah, you can have that.
You're making budget adjustments, I can't tell what you're adjusting, that tells you where it's coming from and.
Will you post these on the website? The financials.
I post whatever I get, I don't, no, we don't put the financials on the website.
The the monthly.
I file them.
I mean, your budget adjustments, we talk about budget at every meeting, I mean.
You are.
I'd like to s- I'd like to see the the adjustments, and that way I can sit at home and look at the numbers and.
You can, yeah, you can have a computer.
The budget adjustments are in the meeting packet. This is the financials that the board members get, which is a summary of all the financial stuff for the past month. So, I mean, that's not, I mean, it, that could be put on the website, I mean, if we wanted to.
Yeah, I'm not.
Well, you're making budget adjustments, I I can sit here and listen to you, but unless it's in front of me, I don't know that you took it from this code and put it in this code. Does zero, does zero all getting out?
No, that's fine.
Because a new year starts, and then that paper gets kinder.
I mean, probably, I mean, we should be posting the entire meeting packet on the website before the meeting, so people can. I mean, probably, I mean, we should be posting the entire meeting packet on the website before the meeting so people can see it.
So you want all these posted too, so we?
Well, what do you feel about the clear checks being posted?
Yeah, that, I, I don't know, I, I mean, that, this is available to the public if people wanna come in and, and take it,
Yeah.
but I don't know that we need to put that all on the website.
I mean, also, I, we work around there.
Oh, I, I don't care about anybody else in town.
We're talking about two different things. The, the meeting packet, I believe, should be posted on the website prior to the meeting.
It is.
It is.
The entire meeting packet, because he's saying that the budget adjustments aren't included.
Well, I put out whatever I get, sometimes, sometimes I think at the last minute something comes up and it's, right, yeah? And sometimes you, there's no time.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's when, if it's not there, because it was last minute.
I can, I can talk to you.
Yeah, yeah, and I know, I talked to you numerous times, you didn't have it out yet, because there was extra stuff added to it.
So, so, so I think what should happen is, we'll post a meeting packet ahead of the meeting and if there's stuff added to it that doesn't get put on the website, then we'll have it available here.
Yeah, yeah, which we do.
Which we do, but I mean, there should be stuff here.
I don't mind about the financials at all, they can go to anybody, but how do you feel about the checks?
Yeah, I mean, I think, we got burned on that last week.
Part of this package is our affiliation.
Yeah, I, I, I think if you wanna copy this, I think you can ask for a copy, you're more than entitled to it.
I'm not looking for any checks, I know what happened when the checks were published, they were online and, oh, how it's been.
Yep.
I'm just looking at how you zeroed, what you took, where to zero something out, oh, checks, nothing to do with that, just financial.
Right. Okay.
And you zero on the end of the year.
Yep, anybody can get this, this, you have a right to see all of that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't, I mean, we have positive paper, totally protect it, but, you know, the account number and all that's on there.
I keep every single meeting packet that I get, as soon as I, it, we're done the meeting, it goes in the folder in my file. The whole entire meeting packets, from all your loans, all of them.
And I get everything from you that I asked for, I'm just, I, you guys are sitting there reading off of something that I can't see.
No, you should have, you should have that before.
And it was brought in late, I take it, so there wasn't a copy of it for the public. And I don't fear if I get it today or a month from now, but I can look at how you zeroed everything.
Anything that's not put on the website prior to the meeting should be available here, so we'll, we'll do that in the future.
Yeah, and she, and I can make you a copy for when you come next time, I mean, it don't matter.
I'm just asking, can I have a copy?
Yes, you can, yeah.
One, one law father, can I have a copy?
And so that's all of them for right now, but like I said, in the next motion, you'll see, there's still, there still could be some more when I start to close out the year. Because this only takes me up to the end of December and abstract thirteen is not part of this. Um, it does very little on it, but I just don't know exactly where I'm gonna be, so we'll vote on this.
Yeah, we just need to vote on this.
Yeah, we can vote on this one, is there any other questions about the, the adjustments?
No.
No, okay, is it all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
I'm gonna go on that, okay. And that brings us to the last one, which, which we do this every year, but. The resolution to allow me to do budget adjustments necessary to close out December, finalize the year-end closing for twenty twenty three. Because I can't start twenty twenty four, and we don't even have twenty twenty four yet until I can get this done. So, um, does someone wanna bring this one to the floor? Ed?
Ed did it.
Ed did it, in a second.
I'll second it.
Resolution to allow the supervisor to do budget adjustments necessary to close out December, finalize the year-end closing for twenty twenty three. Whereas the monthly closing cannot take place until all December invoices are reflected in the Williamson Law Books accounting software for twenty twenty three. And whereas to close the twenty twenty three financials, any existing negatives in the account codes must be rectified. And whereas the twenty twenty four startup and accounting entries cannot be entered until the twenty twenty three closing. Therefore, be it resolved, the town board authorizes the supervisor to complete any necessary twenty twenty three budget adjustments to eliminate negative account codes and close the year. December twenty twenty three monthly financials, the filings, will be available upon completion as well as a final year-end financial report. Okay? Is there any discussion for that?
Yeah, the only thing I, I guess, I don't remember us doing a blanket like approval for this in the past.
Yep, we did this exactly.
We did it, okay. Um, I guess the only thing that I would say is that this, to me, seems like it should address just like miniscule, minor things.
Mm-hmm.
Not large dollar amount things.
Right, right.
Do you have a feel of like what we've got outstanding that this might address?
I'm hoping to have none, actually.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Well, I'm, because what I did was a spreadsheet and then I put in abstract twelve, abstract thirteen. But I didn't have, you know, until I closed for the revenue, so I'd, I think we're fine. But just to make sure that when I come to the next meeting, or if you wanna have a special meeting to take care of this sooner, we can do that as well.
Well, I think as long as it's small dollar amounts, I don't think we need a special meeting, I, I don't know what that dollar amount is, we can talk about that. But, I mean, I just don't wanna get surprised by some large dollar amount that, just because we gave a blanket approval for it.
Oh, I would, right now, we don't have any, but that would be my guess, we don't have any.
I mean, how, how do you guys feel about like putting a, a limit on this, like five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, whatever? I mean, I don't know, just.
Or none, we can have a special meeting, I, it don't matter to me.
Well, I, I get that we wanna avoid a meeting if it's minuscule stuff, I get that, that's fine. But if it's larger stuff, we should probably address it as a.
Don't, I can't, I'm at, because this is pretty much everything except for that little bit. I don't think we're gonna have any, um, but if you wanna put that or whatever you wanna do, it doesn't matter to me, I just wanna close.
What dollar amount would you be comfortable with?
For a total of a thousand dollars?
No, no, I mean per item, per code, per code.
Per code, oh, per item? Oh, I, hmm, it's gonna be small, I, I would say. I, I have no, no way, no one yet until thirteen is closed out, but, hmm. I don't think we're gonna have any, so how about if we say less than five hundred?
I mean, that works for me, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not trying to make your life difficult.
No, but it's fine, no.
Just.
Or do you want me to not do this budget, get that done, and then come back to you? I could do that too?
That requires a special meeting. Yeah, I, I think we're all in agreement of trying to avoid that if it's not necessary, so, um.
I can do it any way you want.
I mean, I can let it stand as it is as long as you're confident that it's small dollar amounts.
It would be very small.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm hoping there's none, actually.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Are you good?
I'm good.
Are you good?
All right.
Okay, in favor, say aye.
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 Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, did you tell me where the workplace violence meetings take place?
Where the what?
Workplace violence meetings.
Meetings?
Yeah.
You mean my review, my annual review?
No, workplace violence is a meeting.
Where I go and talk to everybody about what their feelings are for the workplace violence? The annual thing that I have to do? I did.
Yeah, and see, that happens right here.
Oh, yeah, it happens.
It's not a county thing, it happens here.
Oh, no, it happens right here.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I went around to people and saw what they thought of the risk and there's really not much, because we pretty much know everyone who's walking in the door. So, you know.
Did we get any reports from our code enforcement office yet?
No. He hasn't been called to do anything that I know of.
And we hired him for what?
Answer complaints, but we haven't had one other than the one you mentioned that I was totally unaware of.
Well, he said, I heard him told, when he, he came in for an interview and you, and you didn't hire him that night. He said he know, he knows all kinds of things in town on registered cars, he was gonna clean the town up. We had no report from him, we paid him, what, six, seven hundred dollars or anything?
Well, I think he, he can't just show up, there has to be a complaint, I think, for him to go somewhere. He can't just, well, there's what, the law about the more than two unregistered cars is the only one I know of, other than our local laws that we just did.
Somebody has to file a complaint first here.
Yeah.
We filed one, yeah.
Although you did know of one that he didn't, I don't know a lot.
Yeah, sheriff, sheriff went through that, but that was something to do with the child.
Not the ways for short-term rentals.
You don't have his name or his telephone number on the website yet and you're paying him.
We do now, don't we have his name and number on the website, Cynthia?
No, no, I just found out what, I had no idea what his numbers are. But he gave, I caught him today, but I didn't have time to do it, because I was working on the bills.
Yeah, today was a busy day, I got.
Yeah, so I gotta get that, I gotta get his number on there, he gave, he gave me two phone numbers today, so I got those.
Yeah.
You doing anything with short-term rentals?
Not yet, but that was on my thing, scheduled a day for short-term rentals, we have to address that, um.
Sure, very sure, we need to get that going.
Yeah. Oh, yes, somebody gave him a short-term rental.
Well, we've been talking about since July of twenty two. And anyone that wants to register.
I think we're allowed three times to stop.
Extend it. I know, but we should conclude that, um, and figure out what we wanna do. Oh, but we have that meeting coming up with the attorney.
Up in Horkon?
Yeah, up in Horkon, and that we're gonna be talking about the short-term rentals. It's a question and answer type of thing that they're having up there and Randy and I are going, I don't know, did you wanna go? You can, or if not, I'll take notes and let you know what happens. But that was my topic that I wanted to address there and so Randy and I are going to that.
That's on the twenty ninth.
I've got a lot of ideas what we can do, I've been reading a lot, starting.
Twenty nine. After that, we'll have a more clear idea of what we can do.
Mm-hmm.
Because some of the things count for doing, aren't really legitimate, and if argued, could be, they could lose. So it's better for us to get it right from here. So I submitted a bunch of questions and we'll see.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That's the end of the month, is it?
Yeah, twenty nine, it's at nine, like five thirty, I think.
And I, I think I. Okay.
Okay, so today was the day for the audit after the meeting, are you guys prepared to do that?
So, you guys?
The only ones that, I don't think, you didn't bring your stuff out for the audit, did you?
Oh, I just got it, that's all.
Oh, okay, good, all right, then I'll do your motion.
Which, well, yeah, we can conclude this meeting and then, but which, uh, offices besides the clerk can we do tonight?
Yeah, yeah, you want to. Ours, m, uh, mine.
Yours.
Yours.
Mine and Kathy's, but.
And we have to reschedule the tax collector and the justice?
Yes.
I volunteer to come in during the day doing, unless somebody else wants to come in and do it, they're fine.
Well, don't, should we need two people to come in or no? I think last time you and I did.
We did.
I know for the, for this.
I'm just putting it out there, unless, unless somebody else wants to do it, I will, I got no time, I'm a lot.
I appreciate that.
You know, they're busy, everyone's busy.
Yeah.
And I've got more time to, I will if you want, it's not a problem.
So do we have to adjourn to do the audit?
Yeah, we do, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I'm gonna say aye.
Who's that giving it?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, five fifty six, and then we're gonna open the audit, right?
Yes.
I'm running a bit.
Yeah, you can, you can reach out to Sue and let her know.
Excuse me, I'll leave this on now.